I don't usually have a lot of business or comments, but tonight I have several items. One, I want to just say a big thank you to Taff Roberts. Taff Roberts, for those of you that don't know, coordinated the recent Rockwell Kent Festival in Winona. This is something that's been a dream of his for at least 20 years, and I think it goes to show that one individual can make a big difference. He not only conceived the idea, he chaired the committee, he coordinated exhibits between Winona State, St. Mary's, Marine Art Museum, Historical Society, and the Winona Public Library. And it was a big effort, a big weekend, lots of people, and I just want to say thank you, Taff, and your committee and the people that worked on it. It was a great effort. I also want to recognize another individual. I received a notice today that Mike Chikonowski, the founder of Winona Canoe, received a very prestigious canoeing award. It was the Lebrant Award from the United States Canoe Association, and it's an honorable, it's a very big honor, and thank you, Mike, for all that you do in your business and how it helps Winona, and congratulations. And then I also want to mention, too, that the city is run by a lot of boards and commissions, and there are always vacancies on these boards and commissions, and it's all on our website. You can get the application, it's a one-page application. The mayor is always looking for people to serve on these committees, whether it's Agamig Park, the airport, Board of Adjustment, Architectural Review Board, the Board of Adjustment, Board of Gas Examiners, Building and Fire Code, Cable Television Commission, Citizens Environmental Quality, Fine Arts, Heritage Preservation, Human Rights, Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and the Airport Zoning Board, Merit Board, Planning Commission. So take a look at the website, print out the application, submit it, we're always interested. And then I have one proclamation I need to read here tonight. I'll take a moment. It's a City of Winona proclamation. Whereas registered dieticians are the food and nutrition experts who can translate the science of nutrition into practical solutions for healthy living, and whereas registered dieticians have degrees in nutrition, dietetics, public health, or a related field from well-respected accredited colleges and universities, completed an internship and passed an examination, and whereas registered dieticians use their nutrition expertise to help individuals make unique positive lifestyle changes, and whereas registered dieticians work throughout the community in hospitals, schools, public health clinics, nursing homes, fitness centers, food management, food industry, universities, research, and private practice, and whereas registered dieticians are advocates for advancing the nutritional status of Americans and people around the world, now therefore I, Mayor Mark Peterson, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 13, 2013, as Registered Dietitian Day. And the City of Winona, Minnesota, and encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of registered dieticians and express appreciation for their commitment to promoting science-based nutrition in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow. And witness whereof I have hereunto sent my hand and cause the seal of the City of Winona to be affixed this Fourth Day of March, 2013. That's all I had. Judy?
Nothing today.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is a public hearing to consider the resolution to levy assessment for the removal of hazardous structures located at 659 West Fourth Street.
Your motion? Oh, I got that, sorry. Public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this issue? Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this? I'll ask one more time. Anybody that wishes to speak to the issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And now?
Mayor, I would move to adopt the resolution to levy the special assessment.
Second. Motion by Pam, second by Jerry. Any discussion? George?
I am presuming now this is just a vacant lot now, or are there some other structures on it?
No, the house is still there. All we did was take the left, the summer kitchen off of it and the garage.
Okay, so, okay, fine.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 2.2 is the zoning of the Pleasant Valley Terrace subdivision and County Road 17 properties that were recently annexed into the city.
I'll open the public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak to this? Anybody here wish to speak to the zoning, Pleasant Valley Terrace subdivision and County Road 17? Ask one last time. Anybody here want to speak to the issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I would so move to approve the zoning for Pleasant Valley and County Road 17 and the properties as presented to us.
Second.
Motion by George, second.
You've got two ordinances.
You want to do them?
If they go separately.
Okay. Is there a motion? We're just going to take the, do we need to open a public hearing on both those ordinances?
No, you have one public hearing on both.
On both, okay.
The one ordinance rezones to R1, the second ordinance rezones to residential suburban.
Okay. Do I need to withdraw my motion as was made and seconded, or?
Please.
Okay, I will withdraw that.
Agreed. Okay, motions withdrawn.
I would so motion then to approve the R1 zoning.
I would second that.
Motion, I think I heard Michelle seconded. Al?
Just a point of order, this is an introduction of an ordinance, George, and that would be part of your motion.
Okay. Other comments? Everybody's clear on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries.
No, we need a second motion.
And then I will approve the second motion, which is if you could state that again.
That'd be the motion to approve the ordinance rezoning to residential suburban.
Correct. That would be my motion.
Good motion by George.
I'd second that.
Pam, may I have that one? And questions or comments?
Just to comment, this is an introduction of an ordinance, not an approval. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Carries.
Item 2.3 is the proposed zoning code amendments regarding bed and breakfast and tourist home uses.
I'm sorry.
You have to open it again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Opening, public hearing. Where am I on here?
Two, three.
Two, three. Oh, I'm sorry. Proposed zoning code amendments. Is there a motion? Or no, public hearing. I'm so confused. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to this? Anybody here wishes to speak to the proposed zoning code amendment? Ask one more time. Proposed zoning code amendments. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Open for discussion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to introduce the ordinance, which makes the zoning code changes as proposed.
Motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Paul.
Mayor, I would ask staff perhaps to explain what this is doing, if they could step up and let us know. Thank you.
This is a proposal which will serve, if adopted, to modify a number of provisions related, that we have right now, that are related to regulating our bed and breakfast slash tourist home industry. Started out to be a fairly easy project, I guess, for lack of a better term, in that we did have, what initiated this is that we had a request from a citizen who was interested in setting up a tourist home in her home, and she happens to be located in RR, Rural Residential Zoning District. This type of use is currently not permitted within an RR district. As proposed, we would change the ordinance to allow bed and breakfast and tourist homes to be permitted in our most restrictive residential zoning districts, again, which are RS districts and residential suburban, and RR rural residential districts, as well as our agricultural districts. Currently, the use permitted within R1, single-family residence, residential districts, R1.5, R2, and R3 districts. So what we're doing, proposing this afternoon or this evening, is to expand the scope of the use to include the more restrictive residential districts and our agricultural district that we have. Couple of other major things that we would accomplish, we are reformatting all of our zoning districts so that this use would become conditional in all but the multiple-family residential zoning district. What that does is to require any person who wishes to establish a new bed and breakfast or a tourist home in the city to obtain a conditional use permit from the Board of Adjustment. That would require a hearing, notification to the surrounding neighborhood, and we essentially provide some transparency to the use before it's actually established. Board of Adjustment would utilize our ordinance performance standards that are included in Section 54, 54, I believe, 43, 54.1, as a tool to approve the use, but ultimately, all of these would become conditional within all residential districts but the R3 district, multiple-family residential district. Currently, bed and breakfast homes are permitted only within homes that are classified as historic. That language would be deleted, and essentially, what would happen here is that these uses could be established at any location within the city, within any zoning district. Depending on the zoning district you're in, you're going to be limited to a certain number of guest rooms, but what this would do would be to eliminate any locational requirements for the use. Finally, bed, breakfast, tourist homes currently require two off-street parking spaces for the host family. I would point out that these types of uses have to occur within a structure that's occupied, or on a property that's occupied by the, by a family that owns the property and resides on the property. Off-street parking requirements are currently two for the host family. We don't require anything else for guest rooms at the current time. We would modify that by requiring one guest, one space per guest room in addition to the two required for the family. So that's another major change we're looking at at this point. Outside of that, we're making a number of other changes that are superficial in nature, but that's, in a nutshell, the purpose and intent of what we're doing.
Hey, I have a question. Curious about the dropping the number of guest rooms in the RS and RR districts from, no, from the, and the R1 and the R1.5 from four to three. Does that have an impact on our current bed and breakfast?
No. All of our current bed and breakfasts are located within, two of them are located within R2 districts, and one's located within R3, multiple-family district. And again, the one that, the tourist home that's being proposed now is located within a rural residential district. There's a purpose behind limiting guest rooms in some of these districts. The more intensive residential, more restrictive residential districts, for example, you want to make sure that you're not allowing uses that are inconsistent with the neighborhood, so that's why you restrict the number of guest rooms that are allowed. Once you get into R1.5, R2, those are medium-density classifications, and that's where we start allowing increases beyond three. I think we allow four now within those districts, so. And the R3 is unlimited. We don't restrict the number of guest rooms in R3.
Al?
Mark, how many days can a person stay in the bed and breakfast under this ordinance?
It's, we tie this to the hotel motel tax, which is less than 30, and so that, the purpose behind this, this type of housing is that it's designed to be short-term in nature.
Right.
We're not certifying apartments, we're certifying motel rooms, basically, and again, the key here is that the properties have to be owned and managed by onsite homeowners, and we're kind of wrapping up the regulation of the use a bit by requiring that all uses be conditional in nature, because again, that opens up that transparency to the use, just provides some information to the neighborhood that something's happening in the neighborhood, and which is what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mark. I support the introduction of the ordinance.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion.
Already have a motion, okay. Any further discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is a license agreement for KIMOs for placement of portable restrooms on public property. I'm going to request approval of the license agreement.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Motion by George. Discussion? George?
Keith, is this the firm that we had the problem with a while, a couple of years back, whatever, and that's, I presume that's all rectified and taken care of, so, okay. That's all.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 3.2 is a request for the use of Levy Park by Winona County Wellness Program for their wellness walk on Wednesday, April 17.
Move to approve that request.
I would second.
Motion by George, second by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 3.3 is Ridgeway Community School request to hold a run-walk at the Westlake, Winona, on Saturday, June 1st.
Love to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, second by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to award the contract for the CSAH 32 Batumina Mill and Overlay. The low bidder was done blacktop with a bid of $1,078,883.25. The engineer's estimate was $1,088,844.95.
I would make a motion to approve that bid.
Motion by Al. Seconded by Michelle. Discussion?
Just a, just a point that, we had previously discussed this happening this year, but the bid came in too high, so we rebid it. We're partnering with the county to get this done. This is basically Fifth Street from Pelzer to Junction, Junction from there to Gilmore and Gilmore Avenue to Main Street. So it's a road that definitely needs repair, and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward on it, and I thank the county for their partnership as well.
Other comments? George?
They're a competitor on this. Do they manufacture blacktop as well, too, or they just be like a subcontractor?
Questions? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Motion carries. At the request of Councilman Craig, I've agreed to move the discussion under new business, under air quality discussion, next, and after that we'll take up the frac sand, more.
Thank you for putting this on here, Judy, I appreciate that. Just to bring the rest of the council up to speed, Councilwoman Ayden and I have been working on this with some other people, and this is a, an idea for an ordinance. The idea is not to vote on a motion or an ordinance this evening. We have some discussion on air quality, where we would like to go with it, and then make a motion to direct staff to come back with us with a more palatable motion at a later date. So the motion you see in front of us is just kind of an outline, it's an idea. So that's it right now. And then if, again, the motion would be to direct staff to come back with something rather quickly so we can do that.
Speaking to this idea, I, I think that we've all been very relieved that we've passed the ordinances and regulations that we have studied for a year and we're ready to move on. On the other hand, I don't think that we're going to be done with this issue. I don't think that the Pollution Control Agency is going to really sweep in and save us from taking the trouble to do, to do this work. Of course, they're going to get involved and they're going to release their standards and guidelines probably in August, I understand, but it may take quite a bit longer than that for them to write the actual protocols and the tests, you know, to get it all, you know, the way that the PCA has to have it, in order to take up the testing and the monitoring of these little frac sand substances. So I think that to protect residents now and in the future, we need to, we need monitoring of all open piles of sand. Any place that sand is open, that it's, that it's subject to air and movement, we need to, we need to protect ourselves. I think first we need baseline studies to see what's in the air right now, and then we need to move toward some kind of ongoing monitoring program, much like is being set up in Tipewa Falls and the facilities over in Jordan, Minnesota. Now, the PCA has been working with Scott County and working with the mines over in Jordan to set up, set up their monitoring program, and the company in Jordan has agreed to pay for all of this. So that's the direction I would like to go. I think that we need to start now to get our own ordinance or our own adjustment to the CUP ready so that we're able to step in when we can. But I don't think that, I don't, I'm kind of reacting to the idea that it's like it's all done, because I don't think it's done. I think we need to do more to, to protect citizens from, from the toxins and the carcinogens of frac sand.
George?
Yeah, just the closing line here, it says that, you know, "To assure that local steps be prepared to be taken if the state of Minnesota does not take steps to regulate the air quality of frac sand operations." So is this saying that, or we're asking that we're going to wait for the state to come up first? We have this sitting like off to decide if the state does nothing, then this would go into compliance then?
Well, I, I think that we would certainly need to align whatever we do with, with Pollution Control Agency, for sure.
But I'm just saying what you have in here, so.
So you're talking about, are we going to? I, I think it's not going to be soon that we get this set up, and I'm not anticipating that it will be soon that we will get this set up, but I'd like to move toward it and I'd like to direct staff to start seeing what a monitoring, monitoring program would look like. I would hesitate to, I don't want to jump in in front of the, spend a lot of money setting this up if the PCA is going to really come out with its standards in August, no.
Michelle?
Well, my problem with this initially is, I don't actually have a problem with the California standard, using that as a number, but my, my concern here is that the way we have our ordinance written now is, it's almost improbable and impossible that a new site is going to open inside city limits. And from my understanding, any site that's already operating would not be under this umbrella of anything new we pass. So from my perspective, to spend the time and money on this before the state has not only a test that they can all agree is going to work in the way that it should, test it the way it should, because what I understand is there's not even an accepted test yet for silica. I don't know what we'd be telling the businesses to do, because I'm a little uncomfortable with the cost. I think it's prohibitive and it'd be using our government really to stop the industry, which I don't think is our place. I think we have to monitor and do the safety part of it, but the way this is worded, it makes me very uncomfortable, because it is the MPCA and the Minnesota Department of Health's responsibility to monitor it, and right now I know what they're saying is that they already have something in place, but we're asking them to specify it towards specifically silica. But we also have diesel in here, which I don't think can also, I mean, I don't think our biggest diesel producer is going to be these sand facilities that are located inside city limits. I think the problem is bigger than that. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not entirely in favor of the way this is worded or the way it's presented, and I think it isn't going to do what we want it to do, because I don't see how we've left it open for any new facilities to open inside of the city limits. And I guess I would rather, I would rather the state tell us what is necessary so we can try to implement it. And if August is when it comes out, I, I don't know that we would be faster than that with any study we did, given that we just went through a year-long study on this issue. I don't know that there's more information available that we can actually implement, and I'm not sure how we would set up the monitoring system to function. I mean, there's just a lot of questions here that I have with the way this is set up.
Al?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are parts of this that I like. I think it's, it's a good direction for staff to go into at this point. I think we need to be proactive. I think the issues that councilperson Alexander raised are questions that I think the staff can answer. This is an issue where we really don't have those standards that we need, and I think for us to be proactive and, and having staff research concurrently with Minnesota Department of Health, and let's hope that the state passes some, you know, G E I S procedures. I'm, I'm hearing that perhaps our local representative is not in favor of that, but I'd like to see that move forward on the state level. The diesel exhaust particles, that, that concerns me, but I think those can be addressed as staff goes through this, because I don't think we can as a community address the diesel exhaust issue as much as other agencies such as state and federal officials need to as far as regulating that, but I am in favor of the idea of giving it to staff to have them begin to make this a focus as the state does its work and as we're ready to go, depending on what the state decides to do.
Paul?
Well, there were several letters to the editor and that, that said that we're the highest, of the 13th highest of 87 counties, in diesel particulates, and I think that that says that before the frac industry, we have a problem. And I think that one of the things that we need to really recognize is the fact that is it not the responsibility of the council to protect the public? If so, we need to know what those diesel particulates are and what the current source is. To lay that responsibility on a new industry and say, "We're going to make you responsibility for things that are already happening," I think it's unfair. And I think also the fact that I would much prefer that if we feel that these tests and these baselines and all these things are necessary... and these baselines and all of these things are necessary, that we as a city, for the protection of the residents, establish and pay for it ourselves. That if we think it's that important and that's hazard to our community, then we should pick up the tab for it, because it's already an existing problem per these letters. And if, in fact, those claims are true, then it's, to lay that on someone else, I think is wrong. So I would like to move that we delete the second paragraph of what's being proposed, and I would substitute this in its place. "The city engineer shall solicit bids for testing the current air quality within the city of Winona so as to establish baselines of acceptable air quality standards for diesel particulates and crystalline silica, and to identify any current source which exceeds air quality safety standards as established by the Minnesota Department of Health, and to recommend to the council a procedure based on this data to maintain or improve Winona's air quality."
So you're making a motion?
Then I would make that motion.
So your motion is to, first of all, we have no motion on the floor, so you can't amend a motion.
Okay.
So your motion is to?
Then if someone would like to introduce that as a motion, then I'll amend it.
I would like to introduce, I would like to introduce a motion, but this is not an ordinance. And I agree with all of the comments about diesel. I think that's very difficult to get at, at a local level, and it should not have been, it shouldn't be included in this, in this law. I'd like, very much like to focus on the crystalline particulate issue. So I would like to encourage the, encourage staff to create the, either the amendments to the CUP or amendments to the ordinances in order to require air quality monitoring of all frac sand operations in which sand is left outside uncovered. And that's primarily paragraphs one and two. I think we should strike diesel on the agenda. That's way too much to get at on our level.
And do you want to include a third paragraph that we?
Yes. Third paragraph is, what's the third paragraph? The exposure limit, yes. Third paragraph is good. And of course, we will need a qualified expert, so that would be part of the, that would be part of the plan. My point tonight, our point tonight was just to get going on this, to get going on this, to direct staff to prepare this for our future.
Have you completed the motion? I'm just trying to make sure.
Yes, I have completed it.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it. If I could say something here. First off, I'm glad that they were having this discussion, and I might have been wrong, but I was kind of worried that air quality wasn't going to be talked about anymore until the state came back to us. So we put together a motion as an idea, as a discussion point, and, I mean, we both agreed there were some things in here that we didn't really care for. We wanted input from everybody. So we welcome this input, and this is the exact conversation that we wanted to have. But as a motion to strike a paragraph, to add a line, and then I think it's a bit premature, this was an outline, we got the right, we're getting some input already. We can vote up or down on any motion we, you know, want to tonight, but my intent from bringing this, to put this on tonight, was to direct staff to come back with something with the ideas that we come up with tonight. So to either of your potential motions, it might be a bit premature, but to give direction to what we want staff to come back with is, might be the better way to do it. It's just a thought.
Michelle?
I agree. I was just going to say that we all just voted on the CUP and the ordinance. We haven't even had a chance to have it be implemented, and we're already going back to change things without studying it. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I think, if I'm correct, this goes back to the Planning Commission, does it not? I mean, it just seems to me that to make motions before we even have ideas of not just costs, but things that we can actually do, it's too early for a motion, in my opinion. I, again, when I read this, I thought it was a discussion, ideas.
The council twice has gone on record requesting the state get involved in this issue. And I like the word, I think Al used earlier, that we're being proactive here. And I do think that asking the staff to take a look at the air quality makes sense. I don't think we adequately addressed it in the ordinance. I think there was an attention to, I don't think it was addressed, and I do support asking the Planning Commission to take a look at this.
And I would agree to send it to the Planning Commission, so long as those words, diesel particulates, are removed, since that's not really what the intent here is. If we're going to deal with that issue, then I think we do need to step up to the plate as a city and establish some guidelines. Otherwise, we need to get out, we need to drop it.
I agree with you, and I think what both of you have talked about last meeting was the importance of the truck industry, et cetera, et cetera, and we all agree with that. But evidently, that truck industry or something is causing a potential problem to increase it. So this discussion about frac sand, there's a lot of people talking and we're getting information on diesel. It doesn't directly relate, but it relates, but, so I think we have to go maybe on a parallel route. I would hate to have us just completely forget about the potential diesel particulate issue that we have, but I think it is a separate, it's overlapping, but it'd be separate to what we're talking about here with the frac. I think, look at that, we're agreeing on something here on frac sand. It's pretty cool.
Well, I just think, if we have a safety issue in Winona that's caused by air pollution that's identifiable, we need to know about it. We need to spend the dollars and the resource to baseline it. We need to find out where the problem is. We don't need to dump that on anybody. We need to step up to the plate and man up to the responsibility that we need to maintain and do what's right, and not pass the buck.
Al?
My only comment is, I've looked at the diesel data that, you know, you refer to as far as the counties and how they rank and things like that, but, you know, Winona isn't the only county. I mean, you know, yeah, we may be up a little higher, maybe because of our geography, maybe because of our transportation activity, but there are other counties in the state that have those same issues. So really, to me, yes, we can talk about it, but it's really a state responsibility or a federal responsibility, as I said earlier, to deal with these issues. As it becomes a state issue, then regulations can be developed to, you know, to solve the issues. The trucking industry is, as I've also read, is moving toward cleaner vehicles that don't spew as much of the soot that are of concern. There's, you know, there's a switch to, as George said the other day, to propane, other methods of fueling, big rigs. So I think we need to be aware of it locally, but I think the responsibility to regulate lies with the state.
And city vehicles, we could step up to the plate and make sure that we convert city vehicles first.
As we move forward, sure.
Take the lead.
Sure. Make sure they're clean diesel.
George?
Well, you know, everybody's all really, you know, feeling good about turning these issues over to the state, and we have more on our books right here, right now, than what the state has for any governance. We're well ahead of them. And in fact, I think there's times they're even looking, I've heard some comments made, they're looking at the city of Winona, what we have already done compared, and they, as now, really have nothing. But we're looked at as a model for things that we are doing.
Pam?
Yes. I understand that the Department of Health and the pollution, has released its health benchmark, okay? It's a certain volume of particulate matter that is healthy, or more than that would be unhealthy in a certain volume of air, okay? So they have released that to the Pollution Control Agency. And there are tests that are, to speak to Councilwoman Alexander's point, there certainly are tests. There are monitoring techniques that can be used, and that would be part of what I'd like the city to look at, is what's current, where is it going, what can we do? Because I don't think that the state is likely to have either the staffing or the financing to come down here and do all of this for us. I'd like to be ready.
Paul, I ask this for point of information, what would be the process to see if the state would consider grant, any grant applications from us to take the lead? Carlos, are you aware of any grants?
I would think that would be perhaps part of what staff could consider as we move forward on the issue, that, you know, to comply. There might be some grants out there. You know, facetiously, I guess I was thinking, you know, we always have an issue over local government aid, and perhaps this might factor in, and one of the revisions of local government aid, in that, you know, the city is helping the state promulgate regulations on this issue, and that might come back to us in the form of increased local government. I mean, it's kind of silly, but, but I think that perhaps, and may I suggest this, that we adopt a consensus of the council rather than a formal motion to direct staff to deal with the issues as we've discussed them, and then monitor what the state action is, and then move forward there, just to, just to kind of get this, this whole, you know, action going forward, rather than a formal motion. I mean, we'll have the opportunity for motions when, and discussions and amendments, once the staff comes back, depending on, you know, as issues develop in the state level. But that would be my suggestion, anyway.
Sure. I agree with Al. I, again, I just want to say that I'm hoping that as we move forward and more information becomes available, as it always does on these issues, that we're always looking at ways to better our ordinance. I'm so pleased that our city is one of the first that stepped up, took responsibility for this issue, and came up with an ordinance where others have continued to backtrack and not at least stood in front of people and made a decision. So I'm very proud that we did that. And I guess my assumption was that as more information became available, either from the national or state level, even from our own observations, we would be modifying this to make it a better ordinance. So to your point, Al, I would agree with you there, and I would assume that that would always be something you were doing.
George?
So if we move forward with a consensus, which I like, what would we, in detail here, what would we be asking for them, for our city staff to look at? Because that's where we're going to send it to, right? To our Planning Commission or our city staff? What would we be asking? Everything that we have in front of us here, or?
Minus the diesel, I guess, is the consensus we're hearing.
And also, not included here is a very obvious element, that we need baseline monitoring before we can compare anything to anything. So baseline monitoring, and what would an ongoing kind of monitoring system look like? And how could it be paid for? Now, in Jordan, in Jordan, Minnesota, they're having the companies pay for the monitoring system, and the same is true up in Chippewa Falls. Okay, that's one possibility. Another possibility might be a whole network that they would share the costs. So just to prepare the ground for how we would move forward to monitor the, monitor the air.
Well, I think one of the things that's important is, for whatever the results or the standards are set, they need to have credibility. And I think I would have much greater level of credibility if it was a series of baseline statistical data that was provided through a joint effort between the state and ourselves and a grant application or something like that, that would have some very serious credibility. And I think that's the important thing, is it's got to have credibility. There's no sense someone spending a lot of money and then nobody believing the results, or constantly being challenged by those results. So I think that we need to talk to our local state legislators to see if they would be more than willing to, you know, sponsor some grant monies for us, to be able to establish with them some baselines. And maybe we could take the lead for the state.
Al?
Yeah, I would ask the city manager if she's comfortable with the direction that we've discussed tonight, and she can direct staff to move forward on this issue.
Councilmember, I certainly think we have an idea of where you'd like us to go, and we can prepare that information over time.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there interest in withdrawing that motion?
I was going to second.
There was a?
Oh, I did second it. I'm sorry, I seconded it for discussion. Probably just withdraw, I guess, since we've?
Is that what we do? The only move, we don't move to? The motion would be to send it to the staff or further consideration?
The discussion tonight was after, the discussion during the motion was rather than a motion, Councilman Thurley brought up, was more of a consensus to get across the exact same thing.
Then I would, then I would withdraw.
As will I.
So the motion's withdrawn.
It covers the same exactly.
And I believe there's consensus, so staff understands what we're asking them to do? Everybody's comfortable? Al?
Yeah, I was just going to say, and if we're not comfortable going forward, we can always bring a motion back. And we can also, you know, make a little firmer direction if that, if people feel uncomfortable with the direction of a consensus versus a motion.
Carlos, did you want to?
I have a quick question. Would the information be brought back to council or would it be brought to the Planning Commission? Just wondering if you can specify that.
What's the right process?
Well, you'll need to go through ordinance changes. It'll have to go through our general process, which means the Planning Commission.
All right, well, thank you. Good discussion.
And we'll go back to unfinished business item 4.2, frac sand moratorium.
This was requested by Councilman Craig and Councilwoman Ayden.
Okay. Yes, we have to start out with a motion in order to have a discussion. And I've got a lot of discussion after the motion, so, but I'll do it right, we'll do a motion first. "I move that we extend the moratorium 120 days beyond the stated expiration, March 13, 2013."
I would second that.
Is the motion by Jerry or the second by Pam? Discussion?
I know one of the first people you're going to call on is the city attorney, and I want to start off by stating that we've already talked about it and we agreed to disagree. But I guess I don't really disagree with him as much as his opinion is that we shouldn't do this. He's not telling us we shouldn't do it, but it's his opinion. Some other places, as we know, our neighbor Houston County is looking at extending theirs for a year. And I want to do a little history here. Thirty percent rule, and we discussed that for quite a while, we had advice from the city attorney that, you know, it's a bold move and you could get in, you know, it could be challenged. It was absolutely the right step. We took the advice of the city attorney, but we still took action, and it happened to be the right thing. So by my bringing this up, it is in no way stating, you know, oh, Chris, we're not listening to you. Chris, we are listening to you. But, so that is why I wanted to bring this up. Well, the reason I want to bring it up, okay, no, I just wanted to say that, that it's not, you know, ah, he's full of hot air. He's not. He's hired to be incredibly cautious and give us cautious advice. In my opinion, to extend it 120 days, extending it a year might get us in trouble legally. Extend it 120 days, that's going to give us some time. First off, we're going to see what the state is going to be doing. We're also going to be having the discussion that we just had come back. We're going to have a little bit more information. Also, by making the motion, I've taken a gamble that extending it 120 days is not a long enough extension of a moratorium, again, my humble opinion, that could get us in a litigious situation. I'm done for my part for a while. I'm done for my part for a while.
Other comments?
Well, I have a comment.
Pam?
I'd be interested in extending this moratorium because it's for the same reasons that the city requested that the state take on a generic environmental impact statement. In fact, if you could lift the paragraph right out of there, we simply do not know enough about the real health and environmental risks of the sand projects in Winona. And I think in 120 days, we would have a few more pieces in place, possibly, and it would also give the state a chance to come in with, A, a moratorium, or, B, their own ideas about what to study, the generic impact study. So that would be my concern. That's my interest in the moratorium extension.
Well, I was against it. From the standpoint that the proposed legislation that the state working on right now has provisions in it, as I've seen it, that calls not only for the ability to extend into the future, but also to reenact and reestablish moratoriums that have already expired. So I think we're best to let the state move forward with what they're doing, and follow the current regulations and law, as our attorney has interpreted. And that no harm will be done, because that, everything is a work in process right now. And the legislature has put that within their proposed legislation.
But it's proposed.
Al?
I'm real uncomfortable with this. I can understand why, but there is a regulation, Minnesota State Law 462.356, which, you know, I mean, cities are creations of the state. And the state creates ordinances and rules that govern cities, as much as we'd like to think of ourselves as independent bodies, which in many cases we are, because we're a charter city rather than a statutory city. We can adopt our own rules as they apply to our community. But in this case, it's fairly clear that there are procedures to extend a moratorium that require notification, that require public hearings, that have to take place prior to the expiration of that moratorium. Our expiration is on March 13th. The requirements would not be met if we pass this extension. So therefore, potentially, the city is liable for a violation of this state law. And I'm not willing to vote for moving forward on that. I think that our taxpayer dollars, if we have to defend this decision, are better spent in other areas, and I will vote against this.
Michelle?
I'm gonna agree with Al thoroughly on this. I think that knowingly violating state statute opens us up not only to lawsuit, but other concerns that, you know, and other issues that we don't need to take on, not to mention that we spent a year coming up with an ordinance and a CUP that, again, I will state, although not perfect, is functional, and will give us a starting point to keep moving forward and studying this issue. As so little is known, we don't actually know if the state will ever do a GEIS. And I'd rather just continue on forward and let the state do what the state's gonna do, and we do what is best for our community, which is what we were elected to do. And I don't think going against the attorney here or the law is in the best interest of the community. So I'm gonna be with double and thoroughly on this. I don't think there's a reason to extend the moratorium.
George?
If this is extended, what would happen to current operations that are going on right now? Is there anything that's gonna prohibit them, or are they continuing doing business as usual?
Mr. Hood?
They would continue to operate as they're operating now, under their current conditional use permit.
And then the same with the transportation as well, too?
That's right.
So there's no changes to their operations?
Not for existing operations.
Okay, now, the moratorium on new mines is where this would really lay into, correct?
It would apply to new operations in particular, yes.
Okay, how many new mines do we see that would open in the city? You know, right now, are there any potential mines that could open, you know, tomorrow morning?
No new mines, but the potential for processing or transportation facilities is there.
Okay, but no new mines, which is a big concern here.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna state my opinion here. I think that the responsible action of the city council would be to accept our opinion, the opinion of our city attorney. I know attorneys are not always right, they disagree with each other, that's probably why we only have one city attorney. But I think it would be irresponsible to extend the moratorium against his advice. That's how I'm gonna vote.
I, one last thing, 'cause I know I could certainly count, and I appreciate everybody's concern on that. But if every time we ask the city attorney for their advice, and their advice is a certain way, then why do we ever vote? There are times that we take opinions and we form our own. So that's just a point here. Maybe that won't change, maybe this is a moot point for this particular one. But we're the elected officials of which we're doing a fine job, you know, tonight, we're, you know, voting it up, we're voting it down. But we take advice from staff, and then we make the hard decisions. So I appreciate what you said, but I feel I'm doing a responsible thing, as you are, even though we're on two different sides of this particular thing. But I don't feel I'm being irresponsible, a bit bold possibly, but not irresponsible. But thank you.
Other comments?
My point is that as elected officials, I think that if we do not agree with the premise of what the law is, that we do have the ability to request that we change the law. And so as elected officials, that becomes the prerogative that we have, is to say that the law is, should not be this way, and to initiate the change in the law. Then everybody's in compliance.
While we're still on this discussion, I'd just like to say one thing before the vote, 'cause once we do, we can't talk about a moratorium. A lot of the people that are calling me, and I want to say this right now, that this particular moratorium, most of what we wanted to accomplish with this moratorium has been accomplished, agree or disagree, we do have a foundation built. It could be, some of you feel it could be a lot tighter, a lot stronger, but we do have a foundation. The moratorium and the restrictions that I believe are more important as this process moves forward, the process of frac sand in county. Councilman Borzakowski's right, no more mines within the city of Winona, but there's a lot of them just outside the city of Winona. So I think the biggest efforts on anyone's behalf, if they're concerned about that, would be from this point forward. Certainly, keep giving us input, we want that, we're working on this as a team. But continue, or, you know, step up the efforts when it comes to countywide, 'cause that is where the mines are, and the more of those mines, that's gonna be more traffic in through town. So a moratorium for mines is, that's down the street.
Other comments?
I would call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, does everybody understand the motion?
Uh-huh.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Councilman Thurlow tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, it's my understanding there's legislation moving at the state level to encourage the state to conduct a GEIS for this particular frac sand industry. I would encourage citizens to contact their legislators to support that motion, to encourage the state to begin this process, much as the state has done with other industries that have statewide significance, although no local impact. My understanding is that they've done a GEIS for the timber industry, for example. And although it doesn't affect us, we have some historic perspective on it, you know, the state still did the study and moved forward with that particular study. So I think it's important for them to do that in this particular instance with issues that affect us here in southeastern Minnesota. So I encourage people to contact their representatives. My understanding is that some local representatives are reluctant to support it, so they may need a little encouragement from people here in Winona that are affected by it, to at least give it consideration, and perhaps a positive vote to have the state move forward with that. I'd also like to just recognize my employer, Higher Off the Broadband Communications, for their work in the holiday decorations, the Christmas decorations in downtown Winona. They store them, they put them up every year, and then they take them down. So I just want to thank my fellow coworkers at HBC for doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually it's the case when somebody moves into a new neighborhood, or somebody moves back to a neighborhood, it's all smiles and you welcome them back. Unfortunately, in my neighborhood, that is not the case over this last few days. As was reported through the Winona Police Department, and I believe Minnesota Department of Corrections, and was accurately reported by the Winona Post and Winona Daily News, in the 400 block of Sioux Street, a Level 3 sex offender is now residing. I won't go into the name and anything else that can be found, either by contacting the LEC, going online for Level 3 sex offenders, or picking up the most, one of the most recent copies of our fine publications in town, either the Daily or the Post. Last evening, some members of the West End Neighborhood Watch got together, and today I had a couple of discussions with the chief of police. If anybody has any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact the police department. Tonight, I'm not gonna give out the address, because I'm not sure what it is, and I'd hate to give out the wrong one. And be careful when you do look at websites on the Level 3, too, 'cause at times it's not 100%, but you will get the correct information from me in a day or two, or by contacting the LEC tomorrow, they'll give you the address. But if you have any other questions, ideas, concerns, please feel free to contact the LEC, or contact myself. And anybody interested in, you know, West End Neighborhood Watch, give me a call. What happens, as Councilman Borzakowski knows, with the neighborhood watches, it's often best when they're kind of marking time, but it's usually something like this that gets them motivated and active again. So it's very unfortunate that, you know, the new guest, but maybe some good can come of it by having the Neighborhood Watch get back and active, but thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I have nothing tonight.
Paul?
Just one thing, congratulations are in order for George Wiggy, the son of Myron Wiggy Jr., for his success and participation at the state high school league wrestling tournament at the Xcel Energy Center last weekend.
Pam?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
George?
Okay. Yes, and the Neighborhood Watch groups, as talked about, are very effective. And, you know, it is a good tool for neighborhoods to have. And I thank all those in the second ward, all those in the fourth ward. The second ward helped get us going because of issues, and we were able to get a handle on those issues. So it's almost easier getting a handle on those than frac sand.
Yes.
And also, apparently now, and thank you, we had a mix-up in getting our, not a mix-up, but we had kind of a delay in getting our agendas for those that were mailed to us. Judy, if you could just look at seeing, and, you know, not, you know, we don't need to know right now about the police department once again delivering those agendas. I know it's always been, in the past, they've delivered them for decades. In fact, I know some council members have told me that the police department would even give them a ride home after the meetings out of the downtown. Now, that happened in the 60s, so it just quite didn't happen.
In the 90s, too.
Sometimes it should happen in the 90s, but anyway. And then just one thing, Judy, who's the city manager?
I am.
Who runs the city?
That's a good question, George. Don't answer Judy.
Okay. So you are the city manager?
Correct.
Okay. I just happened to read again an article in the paper that states that Keith Nelson is in charge of the city, and I didn't know that. And he's the city manager, and so on, wherever all the article went. So just wondering who is in charge of the city, so. That's all.
Then under the consent agenda, there are six items. The approval of minutes from February 19th, the final adoption of an ordinance for two changes in the rental housing chapter, claim against the city of Winona by Andy Majeski, a claim against the city by the Diocese of Winona, a claim against the city by Cornelius Williams, and a license agreement for Bob Hemker for the property at 825 East Lake Boulevard.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by George, second by Michelle.
I would like to pull item 8.6 for a separate vote, please.
I'm okay with that.
George?
Yeah, it's fine.
Any discussion about items one through five? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We'll discuss item 6.
I would move for the approval of item 6, but I just pulled it separately because I guess I'm curious about what this entails, why it's included in the consent business rather than an item on the agenda, I guess. I direct that maybe to the manager, or if there's city staff that can answer the question.
Well, Mayor and Council, this, the original concept for this agreement was approved by council in, at a prior council meeting. And we have been trying to come up with a good legal description for this license agreement, and that was what caused the delay in getting it, the actual legal document signed. As you know, that road has been constructed and is in use.
Right.
So really, the council, it would be hard pressed to deny this, because that road is already constructed, and they are maintaining it to our satisfaction.
This is the Adana Realty Building?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what I thought, okay. Kind of curious as to the whole location of it, and, you know, whether it was parkland or not, and all of a sudden, we're doing this kind of after the fact? Kind of concerns me, but I'll still support the motion.
So is that a motion?
I think you've already made it. It's been seconded.
Oh, there's no second.
Oh, I thought I did.
Second by Paul. Okay, so there's a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Well, this came before the planning commission. Mark Muller is not here, I was, he was part of leading the discussion at that time, that there was a road to be built, and I'm just wondering what happened to that, and why we're, why we are returning to it now, because I thought it was all cleared before they even built the road.
Monica just said that there was a legal description that had to be completed.
So the council voted on the concept to prove it, but the actual license agreement had not been drafted because of the delay in figuring out how to write the legal.
Okay, so the concept was approved, and then the road was built, and then the description was on.
Probably not the best order, but--
Okay, I just wondered, that's all. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by George.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.
I wanna see if it's snowed, okay? I'm just--
Boost of energy in the end.